Yeah, the next thing is our spotlight feature for this month is Stephanie Phillips. It's running for Nevada U.S. Senate and she has at least 10 minutes and you can ask her questions at the end. Stephanie, take it away.
Is it on? There we go. How's that? Thank you, everybody. It's so nice to be back. It's been a while since I've been to one of these lunches. And yes, I am running for the United States Senate. I have been traveling all over this state, nonstop. I've been on the campaign trail over a year and it's been an incredible experience. It's a lot of work, takes a lot of courage to stand up and run for an office and especially a statewide office like this. But I'm doing this for a reason. I am passionate about Nevadans. I'm passionate about politics and I'm passionate about representing people for the right reasons because with what we're seeing in Washington right now, we are losing our country. I have said many times, 2024 is our last stand. And if we don't all stand up and unite together and vote and get those people that didn't vote in the last election to the polls this time, we can kiss our country goodbye. So, and that's just, that's what drives me. Every single day, I just, I was up at 2:00 this morning and I just drove in from Las Vegas. Last night, I was in Lincoln County in Alamo. And the night before that, I was in Reno and drove home from Reno. I am back and forth all over the place. And there's, there are so many things that we need to work on. I could talk all day on, on all of the things that I want to do. But since we're, we've got school board candidates here, I talk about children all the time. They're at the top of my platform. So I'm going to start there. They are innocent. We need to protect them. They are the future of our country. So if we don't give this top priority, then who's going to take care of us? Who's going to take care of our country when the time comes? So we saw what Biden did by executive order, what, a week ago to Title IX? He just destroyed women's and girls' rights. They are forcing boys to be in the private spaces, locker rooms. The boys can take the girls' scholarships after they have worked all of their school career. These things that they are just absolutely putting our girls at risk, and I have talked about this from the beginning of my campaign, I will not give any funding to any school who supports putting boys in our girls' private spaces at all. Not a dime. And any of these colleges, these institutions that are getting federal grants, that are allowing these boys to participate in the girls' sport programs and get their scholarships, no more federal grants for them either. All of that needs to go. I can't believe we're having this discussion in this country about these things. We need to define what a woman is because one of our Supreme Court justices can't define what a woman is. And we need to protect our girls and our daughters, our granddaughters. So that's first on my list. Also, with, with children, I talk about trafficking all the time. Because I've been involved in children's charities for 30 years. And one of those in particular rescues children, not only domestically, but internationally. And they bring in these girls, six, seven, eight years old, out of brothels. These kids are being used multiple times a day. I don't hear enough elected officials talking about this. I have given thousands of dollars, so much of my time, I started my own nonprofit in Las Vegas a couple of years ago to help hungry kids and traffic kids. This to me is so, is such an important issue. There's not enough funding at the federal level for these task forces to end trafficking and rescue these kids. I have talked to veteran communities that go out and volunteer their time and rescue these kids. And guess what? They find the guys, they put them in jail, and they're out the next day. We have a problem with our justice system. These people cannot be negotiated out of jail and lessen these crimes. These people need to go away for life. And also the death penalty needs to be, needs to be in charge here. Because I'm telling you, if, if those were the penalties, there'd be a lot less trafficking. And we need to stick to those. We have laws in place that we don't stick to. And I'm tired of seeing the judicial system fail us, fail these victims and these kids. Also accountability, that's another thing that I talk about a lot. We don't have accountability in Washington anymore that I can see. They're spending our money recklessly. We don't have a balanced budget. They're allowing China to take our jobs by our farmland, fly spy balloons across our country without consequence. Our border, my goodness, is wide open. Our country has been invaded for the last three and a half years. I've been to the border. People in my race talk about the border, but they've not been. I was just there a month and a half ago. And I interviewed dozens of illegals. And I see where the wall ends. I see where they're coming in. They're being flown into Mexico, bus to where the wall ends, they walk in, the NGOs have camps set up, they get food, water, Border Patrol comes to pick them up, takes them to the next camp, and then sends them all around our country. And guess who's paying for it? We are. Our tax dollars are going to the UN. The UN is giving them $5,000 gift cards on our dime. So until we get somebody in office and overhaul DC, people who are going to fight for us, who are going to be accountable to we the people, people who are freedom fighters, patriots, and people who actually care and are going to represent we the people for the right reasons, we're going to have more of the same. And I see people in my race, I see multiple carpetbaggers, I see opportunists trying to buy a seat, I see people that are bought and paid for by mega donors, by Mitch McConnell, who we all know sells us down the river almost daily. We need to look at who is going to represent us and Nevada the best. Who's doing it for the right reasons? Who is a true Nevadaan? Nevada is my home. I have lived in Nevada 31 years, more so than anyone in my race. And what do you do with your home? You protect it, you defend it, you maintain it, you care for it. Nevada is my home. That's what I'm going to do with the people of Nevada and with this state. There's others that have run other campaigns in other states and they just come here looking for a seat. Nevada's not their home. I look at motivation behind candidates and why they're in these races. I look at money. Who's going to owe who what? No one owns me. I am not bought and paid for. I don't have any mega donors. The only people I answer to are God and we the people. So if we want change, and that's all I hear, I go around this state all the time and I hear all the time, "We want change. We need something new. We need somebody different." Well, you've got her. And I'm sitting right here before you. Nevada has a secret weapon in your arsenal. You have a fighter. You have a lion that's ready to go to work for you. You have someone with courage and who is fearless. And that is how I've been running this campaign. Completely, courageously, I have been putting it all on the line for the people of this state. My income has been cut in half because I have stepped away from my business. Willingly so, I am doing this. Voluntarily so. I have given thousands of my own money to this campaign. And I'm doing this not because I need a job, not because I want the title, the name, the fame, the power. None of that means anything to me. I want someone who's going to represent us for the right reasons. And that's why I'm doing this. So accountability, that's, that's high on my list. National security, I kind of covered that with what China's doing and what we're allowing them to do. They have infiltrated our country. Oh, and not to mention the tens of thousands of Chinese nationalists that have crossed our border. They have built a mini army in our country. Right? How many terrorists besides that has come over our border? They don't know. And what do you hear from Cortez Masto and Rosen? Zip. Nothing. They are a rubber stamp for the Biden regime. We need to get Jackie out of that seat. We need to put me in that seat so that I can represent you, defend you, protect you, uphold the Constitution. They are destroying, shredding, and violating our Constitution daily by allowing this invasion. That is directly against the Constitution. All of these people, including Biden, they're guilty of treason in my book. If I sound mad, I am mad. And everybody in here should be mad. And that is what's going to get people to the polls to vote. In the primary, it's coming up, June 11th, typically 18% to 20% of registered voters vote in the primary. 18% to 20%. Last primary, 25% voted. That's it. That 25% is deciding who's going to get out of that primary and go to the general. That is not a good representation of voters in Nevada. I would urge everybody in here, and I thank you all for being here, and I thank you for being involved, and for all the candidates and everybody running and putting their time into this, because I know, I know how much time it takes. But all of us have a duty, we have a mission, we have a responsibility to vote, to get others involved, to spread the word. And my message is to, to everybody that I want, I want you to know that I am here to represent you. I will be transparent. All of my clients, I've been in the real estate business over 30 years, and all of my clients trust me implicitly. The basis of all relationships is trust. And that's a marriage, boyfriend, girlfriend, friendship, politician, constituent. You have to be able to trust your politician. How many people trust politicians?
[inaudible]
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Thank you, Bill. So, but that is something that's so important. Ask yourself, when you go to the polls and you're looking at all of us on that Republican ticket, look at each name and say, can I trust this person? Who owns this person? Can I trust her with our state, with our best interests? Can I trust her to make the right decisions and not sell us out? The answer is yes. So, am I done? Sorry, am I talking too long? Ray's like, hurry up. Anyway, thank you, guys, for the time. I thank you so much for being here. And I ask you for your vote on June 11th, the primary. Thank you so much.
And you can tell. Stephanie is very shy, not aggressive, quiet. She'll make a very good candidate. And has been all over this state. Oh, as you were up here with us Sunday, went home, came back, back and forth. And May the 9th, May the 9th, put that down in your bonnets, is the Franklin Project, which we're involved in, U.S. Senate Candidates Debate. Stephanie, Bill, and all the other candidates except Captain Flip Flop are going to be there. Huh? Right. Anyway, put that, and it's at Boomtown at 4:00. Sign up. It's $35. Since Beatles Project, Franklin Project is covering a lot of the costs. It's only $35 to go to it. Now, one, one other thing. And if you want to stay and ask Stephanie questions afterwards, I'm sure she'll stay and answer your questions. Among all the other things she has to go back and forth. Anyway, before I forget and before we get into the actual town hall, I want to give a little bit of a shout out. Shaden is with Turning Point Action. Stand up. Yana, stand up. She's the new president of the Washoe Library Board. Maybe the only conservative. And again, she's very shy, as you'll see. And is Steve still here?
Here, right here.
Where?
Stand up if you want.
Oh, Steve Sanson with Veterans with Politics. Raise your hand. With that in mind, did I miss anybody before we get into it? All right, with that in mind, Brooke's going to read a brief resume on each candidate. And there'll still be candidates coming in. There's a pretty good group of at least eight of them. And then Gary is going to cover the rules for the debate. Brooke or Gary, why don't you read the rules for the debate first? Or not the debate, town hall?
First up, we'll have, I think, three questions from the moderators. And the candidates will have one minute to answer, to answer each of those questions. After that, we'll go to audience questions. And we'll put a little restriction on the audience. 30 seconds to ask your question. And then new candidates will have one minute to answer it. If we have a rebuttal, the candidate who wishes to rebuttal, simply raise your hand, and we'll give you 30 seconds to rebuttal. I have signs here. At one half of your time, I will hold up the yellow. When you have 10 seconds left, which means finish your answer, I'll hold up the red sign. If you go past that, you'll get a gavel. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for explaining. And with that in mind, I wanted to thank the people who helped put this on. Brooke Westlake, raise your hand. And the Butchers, Gary, and where's Janet? Eddie Floyd? And with that in mind, I'm turning it over to Brooke to start the bios. And you do it the way you want. There's still one candidate. There's eight of them. So I guess start with, what did you have them alphabetically or?
I had, I had you have me line them up. We're going to go with A, D, E, and G. And I'll explain that. So I'm going to give a little introduction. Would you like me to start? Can I start? Okay. Before I get started, I want to thank everybody for coming today. I know it's really important to come out of your schedules and participate. I am a proud mom of two boys. And I feel like right now, there's nothing more important, as Stephanie mentioned, as our children and the school board races. I believe right now, this is just a very critical time in the United States. It's not just here, it's everywhere. I've been an advocate and a parent against the policies within Washoe County School District that have removed parental rights. My name is Brooke Westlake. I'm the founder and owner of rparentalrights.org. And I have a book coming out in four weeks. I'll let you guys know about that when it's released. Two years ago, I sat in the seats where these incumbents are and the candidates are. Today, and, and I had ran for the Washoe County School Board. I have been in politics in the realm of Reno since 2008. And my intention is that I will eventually run again. I'm passionate about my children and the community that they're growing up in. To me, Reno is my, there's no place like home. I have been here since 1989. And I'm currently on the following government boards, being governor appointed by three different Nevada governors. This includes the Northern Nevada Disciplinary Board, which is also known as the Bar Board. I also sit on the State Bar of Nevada Board Fee for Disputes Committee for Reno, and the Board of Examiners for Long Term Care Facility Administrators. I'm also the co-chair of the Moms Coalition through Turning Point USA. Joining me today is my wonderful co-host and moderator, Eddie Floyd of America Matters Media, a true advocate and supporter of our community and our children. He should be recognized for his continued support and efforts by his company and his own doing. You're very welcome. I also want to extend my thank you to Matt Buehler for running for the state school board, and also Stephanie Phillips for running for U.S. Senate, for the Nevada U.S. Senate. Everything she's, she says and has spoken every time I hear her speak, I resonate with all of it. Please note that all the incumbents, every single Washoe County School District incumbent was invited today. The only one that is here that is representing and showing up is Mr. Jeff Church. You deserve a round of applause for that. I will say, one of them did reach back out and said that she had a prior commitment, but I did not hear from the other two.
Why did we say that?
They were notified multiple times. And no answer is your answer. If they can't even tactfully write back and say, I'm sorry, I have another commitment, I'm in a meeting, I have my job. Well, then why are you in office if you can't even respond to a simple email to come and have a debate? I'm going to give a brief outline that Ray asked me to do about not only the bios, but the districts. So I'm going to just give a brief outline on the districts, and then I'll read everybody's bio. So District A, which currently is Mr. Jeff Church's seat, includes South Reno, DeMonte, Double Diamond, Arrow Creek, Montro, and Incline. Think of it kind of like your South Reno area. District D includes Huffaker, Collin Ranch, the Mayberry area, and part of the downtown Reno area. District E sits right above the outline of District D, which includes North Reno, TMCC, Par Boulevard, McQueen, to Verde. And our at-large district that is up for a seat is, we also call it District G, is known as our at-large. This covers West Reno to Verde, to downtown, and Pleasant Valley to Incline. So think of Reno split in half, and District G is kind of like your left side. Both Eddie and I, well, actually Eddie, Eddie blessed me. He said, I'm going to read all the bios. But I had pre-written that Eddie and I were going to read the bios. I'm going to be reading the bios today of the incumbent, the only incumbent we have here today, and the rest of all our lovely candidates. Next, there will be three questions. As you guys were instructed, you will be given a minute each. Gary is your timer. You get your 30-second mark, your red mark. If it's at the red mark and you are in the middle of a sentence, please just wrap up your sentence. But if you continue to go, he is going to gavel you down. After that, we will then do the, we're going to do the order of, the Q and A is going to go order of operations. So we're going to start with District A, D, E, and G. As he mentioned, if you have a rebuttal, you will flag your hand and raise it. And when we are done with the three questions, then we will open the mic up for the audience to ask a question. You all have 30 seconds to ask your question. And then the candidates will be given one minute to give a response. So let's start with District A. Our lovely incumbent, Jeff Church, our watchdog, a true conservative who's been our only conservative on the board. Here is his bio. I, watchdog Jeff Church, stand by my record of the past three years as the only conservative trustee on the WCSD Board. I'm a retired police, Reno Police Sergeant, and a USAF Lieutenant Colonel, Reserve Commission. I hold two college degrees, one with honors. I'm a Spanish speaker and a former board president of Reno's first 24/7/365 homeless center. I need backup, and we have good candidates in these other three races. Next up is District D. Reminder, the incumbent, Beth Smith, was invited three times and provided no response on coming. Starting with our first candidate, we have Mr. Jeff Cole. Josh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you for joining us, Josh. And here is his bio. After witnessing the in-class violence my son has suffered, I wanted to bring back safety, accountability, and academics to our classroom. No longer should parents fear for their child's safety or wonder if they are going, if they are getting an education that will prepare them for the future. I will fight tirelessly to make sure that schools work and offer parents options. Thank you, Josh. Next up, we have Victoria Meyer. Hi, Victoria. She's also in District D. 48 years, this is her bio here. Ms. Victoria Meyer, 48 years, Washoe County resident, business owner, and grandparent of five lovely kids. The schools are broken. Our kids are attending schools that no longer are conducive to learning as evidence-based by the literacy upon graduation. With a billion-dollar budget and a district that favors top-heavy administration runs by unions and elected trustees who are unresponsive to the current concerns of parents in the community, we can do better. Let's restore parents as the primary authority of their children, restore order, and enforce current regs and laws, and restore current curriculum that works. DEI, CSE, CRT, and SEL have and had plenty of time to prove they do not work. Let's get back to common sense education, put servants back into public servant. We can do better. Thank you, Victoria. Next on our list is Ron. He's not here with us yet, is he? Do you want me to read his bio?
No.
No?
There's still a few.
You want me to wait to do his until he gets here? Or do you want me to read Ron's bio? Because he confirmed that he's coming.
Go on.
Read it or not read it?
Read it.
Okay, done. Okay, next we have Mr. Oscar Williams. A resident of over 30 years, parent of a special needs, former student of WCSD. I experienced student profiling by teachers and administrators of my son. If elected, I will, one, redefine the definition of special needs to be less broad, and the IEP revamped. Number two, fund after-school programs to help falling, failing, and below-grade pupils. Number three, increase teacher-to-student ratios. And number four, take back control of what is taught in the classroom. Thank you, Oscar. Next up, moving to District E. Oh, and Bev is not here. And Oscar's for District E. So Bev, we'll save hers for later, too, because she's not currently here yet. Moving to the last district that we have, G, which is sitting over here to my left, starting with Alicia Wu. A Reno native, I graduated from Worcester High School. Hey, me too. Yeah, yes. I graduated from Worcester High School before earning a degree in education from UNR. For 17 years, I was a science teacher and coach at DeMonte Ranch High School. After leaving education, I transitioned to a role in scientific research, and I'm pursuing a master's in crisis and trauma counseling. I decided to run for the school board out of the desire to help and address the problems facing our schools. Thank you, Alicia. Next up, we have Mr. Paul White. Paul White, a two-time educator of the year, had a national award, 38-career year as a teacher and a principal in elementary, middle, and high school, and as a charter school superintendent. He has transformed 12 schools in seven school districts into high-attending, drug- and violent-free, respectful, and high-performing schools. One of his schools in LA was named a Top Five Stories of the Year by People Magazine and CBS National News. He's authored dozens of articles on school reform and is the co-author of White Rules Saving, White Rules Saving Our Youth, One Kid at a Time, is the founder, and he's also the founder of Education Crusade. Thank you, Paul. Next up, we have Jacqueline DiCarlo. Jacqueline DiCarlo grew up in Reno, Nevada, from a young age, attending school in Washoe County School District. She graduated high school in 2020, giving her firsthand experience of what needs to be improved in our schools. With a passion for helping students excel, she wants to contribute a youthful presence and vision to the school board and bring long-lasting impactful change to our community. and vision to the school board and bring long-lasting impactful change to our community." Thank you, Jaclyn. And then the last one I have here on my phone, Monica Lehman. "Monica Lehman is running because public schools are not doing their job, but instead focusing on other agendas and indoctrination, nothing to do with teaching real curriculum. A mother of three grown adults, three professionals today, I gave my whole time to them. I am a business, I have a business and bachelor's, but it was more important to me that my children have a future. I have three languages that I can speak, and I help others 50% of the time, the Latino population into the public schools and everyone around. We need to help the future of Nevada, teaching, guiding, and training them to champion the cause of freedom and truth in every sector of the society." These are your candidates and incumbent today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. And by the way, she was very sick just a day or two ago, and we got her on medication. Irish whiskey. Anyway, let's start the actual town hall, and Eddie and you guys alternate.
All right, thanks. So I'll start with Josh, right?
We're going to start with Jeff.
Jeff, Jeff, start with you, Jeff, sorry about that. Then we'll go Josh. We've already screwed your name up twice. That's okay.
We've got it now.
Yeah, well, we've got it. You know, I do radio and have done it for 49 years, and now we're doing radio and television five days a week, Monday through Friday. And I'm often asked, what's the most important election that you can possibly think of that every time we have either a primary or a general? And I always say the same thing. You know, obviously, our president is important, but you know, they might only make up 32% of our population, but our children make up 100% of our future. It's just that simple. So I am right now talking to the people that I want to talk to, because they're the ones who are going to be responsible for our future. First question, ready?
Ready.
All right. What would be your first priority if you were elected?
So my name is Jeff, Jeff Church, watchdog Jeff Church. My website, watchdogjeff.com. I've been on the school board for just over three years. I'm frequently the six-to-one vote. If we're going to fix the school board, if we're going to fix education, literally, we got to take it down to the studs and start over. There is no simple fix. It is a disaster. We are failing, failing, failing. We're down in every single category you can think of, and we continue to go down every year. So I can't give you one set answer, other than the fact it has to be taken down to the studs and rebuilt, concentrating on education, not indoctrination, the three Rs, critical thinking. And to do that, you've got to have discipline in the classroom. So, you know, Paul's going to talk about dealing with drugs and stuff later, I'm sure, but you got to deal with the discipline, the drugs, the violence, and then start from that foundation, hold everybody accountable.
Okay, so if I was on the board, the very first thing I would do is I would involve parents and drive some transparency. So the reason why I am running is my son's classroom was constantly being evacuated, and all that I asked from the district was that they notify me when it happened. And after meeting with Mike Paul, Deputy Superintendent Keough, and Dr. Enfield, and working very heavily with Beth Smith, they finally told me that the answer is no, they will never notify parents when classrooms are being evacuated for safety reasons. So the first thing I would champion is a policy that parents be notified when their children are put in a situation that is unsafe.
Shall I read the question again? Okay, you got it? Okay, then you take it away.
Victoria Meyer, District D. The priorities are, as Jeff has stated, to get this system down to the bare bones and restart. Parental rights, restoring order. Kids can't learn in an environment where there's violence and drugs happening. That's the first point of order, and restoring parental rights. We have Administrative Regulation 5161, which is on my website, voteforvictoria.com, that's the number four. And, you know, we restore order, and we also get back to tried-and-true teaching methods, get rid of the DEI and SEL and all that stuff, and start teaching academics critical thinking skills. And I urge everyone to vote in the primaries. Please tell your family members, please get your neighbors to vote. If we don't win in the primaries, we don't have a chance of taking back this school board. Thank you.
That's the next question, Oscars. You be read it again?
I got it. All right, thank you. Hello, Oscar Williams, I'm running for District E. My website is votoscar.com. Well, assuming that you, everybody votes in, the best candidates out there, including me, I will immediately vote for Jeff Church as president. And then, then we'll pursue an agenda, all right? And the agenda is going to be quite broad and on there, as Jeff said, there's not one particular thing, it's a whole basket of stuff we have to tackle. And I guess the meaning of minds will determine what boils to the top first, right? For me personally, there's two things I kind of think about when I think about schools and reforms and so on. I'm very concerned about the individualized education program. It's gone out of control. It's an area of largesse, of spending, of special interest groups getting involved with, everybody's got their fingers in the pie of the county coffers, right? That billion and a half dollars. So what we need to take back, we need to engage parents and students, give them, give them a chance to have control. To do that, we need to give the school board control, and that's involve state. Thank you.
Okay, young lady, you're next.
All right. Hello, my name is Alicia Wu. I'm running for District G. My website is votaliciawu.com. That's Wu with two Os, not a U. When I was listening to Jeff say what he would change, I'm pretty sure he was inside of my head, because I've been thinking the exact same things. We really need to scrap the whole thing, start over, focus on academics, have actual discipline in the class. Part of starting over would be looking at where's our money going, because we have an awful lot of money going to schools that are super ineffective. So I would imagine we could redirect that money into a place that it will have a better impact. Part of that impact could also be making school relevant. When kids are in school and they don't see a purpose to what they're learning, they're not very engaged, but if you can give them a purpose, that can make a big difference.
Okay, now let's go to Mr. Paul D. White.
I've turned around 12 schools, and that's why my top priority would be exposing how morally rotten and incompetent and hopelessly gone the school district is. They simply need to know how bad it is. Once everything's been exposed, too much to go into in 40 seconds, then you would unite people to push and do whatever it takes in the state to get full vouchers for everyone. There's no fixing what's going on. It's delusional to think it is. All that can be done is it can be exposed, solutions can be shown, and then you can get people to do whatever required, to get the governor to take emergency powers and grant full vouchers to every parent.
Okay, Jaclyn, you're up.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn DeCarlo. My website is votedeCarlo.com. I agree with every one of the candidates that have spoke so far, but my opinion in the top priority would be to improve education. Obviously, we're ranked last in all 50 states for education, so I think we need to revamp how we're teaching these kids. I think we're going to discover problems that we haven't come in the past because of technology. It's proven that kids have a shorter attention span, so I think we need to rearrange how we teach them, and just the format in general. So I think that is top priority, to make education more fun and more applicable for students in today's schools. Thank you.
All right, now let's wrap up our first question, one with Monica. Monica, you're up, lady.
Hi. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Monica Lehman, running for school board District G. Well, my friends already say and talk about what is my, if we have to do something, all your answers are already here. I love that, I'm going to do the same, but plus something, and my foundation and priorities are under God and Constitution. So I want to bring the Constitution to the schools, public school. I want to defend, to defend, that is my duty, and so to love to find and to defend the truth, connecting the base with the Constitution and the right to our children, teaching a new generation to be free. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great answer for question one, and now we're going to move on to question two, and we're going to start back in that same order again with Mr. Jeff Church. What is your second priority if you are re-elected?
Well, once again, it's hard to put a list of what we're going to do, because we have to take it down to the studs. I do think discipline and drugs are one of the first things we've got to deal with, because without that, the classrooms are out of control. Second of all is public quality of education. I want a Quality of Education Committee. I've asked for that since day one. Not one of the other six candidates will second me. A committee on education, what is wrong with that? I mean, this is like being in the Twilight Zone, folks. So as a retired cop, I'm telling you, I need backup. I need, I need these great folks here to get elected so that I have backup on there, because that's really what we need. For my second thing is to have backup. So I definitely need these folks to be elected. We've got to, I'll finish it with a few, with a comment. CRT, DEI, SEL, and BETH must go. And that means Beth Smith, the Board President.
Next up, we have Josh. What is your second priority if you are elected?
So I forgot to mention what my website was. It's www.votjoshcole.com, so I didn't want to miss out on that. One of the things that I've noticed about the board is that they're not really in charge. There's actually someone else at the district who's in charge, and that's the General Counsel Neil Rombardo. He is, quite frankly, an evil man that wants to harm our children, and he's the one that gives legal authority to many of the things that are going on in the district. So my second policy would be to oust him and get a competent lawyer that is able to actually represent the interests of our children.
I'm going to say amen to that. That's clearly a big issue within the district. Next up, we have Victoria. What is your second priority if you are elected?
Second priority would be the budget, $1.4 billion currently. Two years ago, it was $1 billion. $400 million dollar increase. Where's all this money going? Student enrollment is down from 2019 by about 6,000 students, and they want to say it's a declining birth rate, not people fleeing the district, as they actually said in their last school board meeting. And I wanted to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. Diversity is not about skin color, it's about diverse ideas. Equity is a racist word, it's a Marxist socialist word, actually, that says that we must lower all the standards to make the, you know, the students that need the most help, we bring everyone else down to their level. And inclusion, what's so inclusive about the way that the schools are doling out indoctrination right now? We need full plethora of ideas in our schools.
Thank you. Next up, we have Oscar. What is your second priority if you are elected?
I got kind of a second and a third, so we'll see how far I get in 60 seconds. Part of the individualized education program, or should I say chronic absenteeism, violence, drugs, a lot of things that we're seeing in school, the school board likes to blame it on mental health. Mental health problems, our kids all have mental health problems. Let's bring in some counselors, let's put a Band-Aid on it and make everybody feel like we're doing really good. What a load of garbage it is, guys. It's got to stop. The school should not be involved with mental health services. It's not appropriate, all right? It's not their role. If they're acting out, it's because they hate school, it's boring, it sucks. Now that should be why they're, that should be fixed. You make school interesting, you make them want to come to school, they'll be respectful, they'll pay attention, they'll actually learn, and we'll see the improvement. But school's become a terrible place, and so we, kids are acting out, blame it on mental health. Special needs after-school programs, we can contract with local vendors, tutors, teacher assistants, and provide the kids who have language problems, ADHD, whatever, and solve their problems that way. Thank you.
That was great. Next up, we have Alicia. What is your second priority if you were elected?
It is very difficult to choose, because there are so many things, but I would say really looking at student behavior. Right now, students, there is an issue with bullying and violence and behavior in the classroom. As a teacher, I saw the issues in the classroom and how difficult it made my job to teach the students. A lot of the focus is on what they used to call positive behavior support. Now I think they call it, like Restore at the Door, or something like that. Anyway, it's basically, essentially, it's talk to them at the door, say, "Okay, you can do better, and feel good about yourself, here's a piece of candy." And then they go back into the classroom, and the teacher doesn't really have any, it's very difficult to control your classroom at that point. I think we need to have real standards for behavior, enforcement of those standards, and then support for kids who do need the positive.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul White. What is your second priority if you were elected?
Well, if the first priority was to expose how bad it is, the second priority would be willing to fight to do what it takes to expose it. Because the reason nothing's been exposed thus far is that the board for many, many years has thought of these things, brought up these things, these details, and they're important details, but when they're told no, then they turn around and walk away. Well, we tried. I have a career as a fighter. I threw out the second-largest, superintendent of the second-largest district on earth, LA County. I've thrown out more principals and teachers than I can remember. If you're not willing to fight for your freedom, for the freedom of these schools, to expose how bad it is, then none of the details will matter. So second priority, fight until full exposure is achieved.
Our next individual, Ms. Jaclyn, what is your second priority if you are elected?
My second priority would be to get parents involved in schools again. I think that the, attending school board meetings myself, the past few times, I've noticed that the school board does not pay attention to parents' opinions, as well as the communities. So I think it's very important that we get parents involved and notified of what's actually happening with their students and their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaclyn. And last, we have Monica. What is your second priority if you are elected?
Thank you so much again. I totally agree with all my friends here. Oh, I forget, my website is monicaforeeducation@protonmail.com. So yeah, my second one is because they're training teachers, they're indoctrinating teachers right now. So for me, the second one is going to be protect these teachers to continue working in their own professional education teaching. So they are not going to be removing these teachers, because they don't have these, they are not, they don't want to teach things that they are not in their education curriculum system, but to retain and retrain teachers according to the Constitution. That is my second one. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And we're going to do our last question, and I'm going to pass the mic back over to my lovely co-host, Eddie.
I've been called a lot of things, but never lovely, okay? And Ray agrees with that. Now, this last question, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor, without attacking the way someone looks, or their educational background, or anything like that, why, and I'll start with you, Jeff, why should people vote for you compared to these other great candidates lined up here today?
Thank you. That's actually a great question. This is like Goldilocks and the Three Bears in my race. You have three good candidates, two good, one terrible. You have Stephanie Flores, you have Jeff Church, and you have the other person. Stephanie's the moderate. She's the porridge that's, you know, not too hot, not too cold. You have me, where I'm unabashedly a conservative, and I stand on my record. And then you have the far-left candidate that was handpicked by Beth Smith to run, and she refuses to come to any debates or anything else, and she engages in false information. I'm going to go out and say it, she basically lies on her website about statements and things, and then retracts it after I complain. and things, and then retracts it after I complain, but it gets up there. So you have three candidates, you have the right, middle, and the left, and I hope that you vote for, for me.
Let's go, let's go now to you, Josh. It's your turn.
Thank you, Eddie. So why should someone vote for me? Well, last year, when I had my son in the, in the classroom, I was able to see what was actually going on and what they were trying to hide from parents. And I wish that I could go back to that point where I was just an ignorant parent that didn't really know, but that time is now gone. So I am motivated to fight to make things better because I saw the damage that the school district did to my son. I saw him go from a happy, independent child to a child that was fearful of leaving my side. I saw teachers go unsupported and being placed on administrative leave. And do you know that the, the teachers' unions don't help teachers when they're on administrative leave? So there's a lot going on that I'm intimately aware with just because I was able to be there and see it with my own two eyes. And if you do talk to Beth Smith, she's going to say that she's proudly the only candidate with a child in the district. What she won't say is, I tried to work with her, and because of her failures, I had to take my son out of the district to protect him, and she knew it, and she won't talk about it.
Wow. Okay, let's now go to you, Victoria, if you don't mind. Same question, why should people vote for you as opposed to every other of these great candidates?
Well, there are some good candidates running with me, and one, not so much. She's the incumbent, and here I found this morning, head of Global DEI for IGT, Global DEI Professional, winning an award for DEI, you know, global star here, Beth Smith. That's not, not the direction we want our county to go. I can stand on a record of having gone to school board meetings, county commission meetings, library board meetings for quite a few years now, and I think my record, where I stand as a strong conservative with some moral courage and a backbone speaks for myself. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, coming to you, Oscar. You're up.
Hello. There are four candidates running for District E. I happen to be the only one sitting here, running for District E. That should mean something to this group, I hope. But more than that, that's, that's, that's a simple one. It's really, for me, what I can do, it's about a posture towards state. We need state, Department of Education, and Finance to do the things the board asks them to do, not the other way around. The board has to have the control to run things at the local level and not get dictated to, which is kind of the dynamic. Is Matt Bueller still here? He may have already left, but Matt is key to the strategy to take back our county. We need state to give us the reins so that we can do what we need to do. They're hamstringing us. I have experience advocating against state. I've actually told the Secretary of State he needed to resign after the PPP fiasco. I stuck my neck out. I said something, I'm not afraid to get out there, I'm not afraid to sling the mud and to get in their faces. You need me in District E. Vote Oscar.
All right. Thank you, Oscar. Now, let's go to Alicia. Alicia, you're up.
Well, frankly, of the four of us that are in District G, I think we all have our strengths, and I think any of the four of us would be great. So pick any of the four of us. There are seven people in the, in the race for our district, so just any of the four of us, but not the other three. The other three are not good. For me personally, I think my strength is that I have 17 years in our Washoe County schools. I know our kids, I've been in the trenches, I know how the system works. And so I think having that insider knowledge is helpful. Like I said, each of these other three also have, bring strengths, so it's really whatever resonates with you.
All right, let's go to you, Paul. You're up now. Paul D. White.
I'm not urging anybody to vote for me. What I am interested in doing is fully exposing what's wrong. My website shows that I've got 38 years of experience in fixing every single problem and many more, many times, what's going on in our district. So my goal is to expose what needs doing, and to do your research on all your candidates and all your districts, and listen to them, and then you decide who would you think would best meet these needs. But you've got to know what's going on first, and so that's my main goal. The other, the other things, if you get anybody in office who acknowledges those problems and offers solutions for how to solve them, will be definitely ahead of where we are now.
Thank you, Paul. Let's go now to Jaclyn.
Well, I have a few different reasons why I think I would be the best candidate for District G. One, it's because I'm young, I'm fresh out of high school, so I can resonate with the students that are currently in the school system. I also have some great ideas for what I wish I had when I was in high school, so I think that makes me a great candidate. But also because I'm young, I have a lot of passion and fire, and I'm ready to fight these, the, the evil that's going on in school board. So there's that. Also, I'm a woman, so the arguments that they have thrown against Jeff Church, sexual harassment allegations, they cannot do with me. Because I'm a woman, I don't think there are going to be men complaining about a pretty lady being nice to them. So there's that. But yeah, I, thank you. That's what I have.
That was a good call. Now, let's wrap up this question with Monica. Monica, you're now up. Why should people vote for you as opposed to everyone else here?
Sure. I'm totally agree with my friends, District G. I'm here because I really, God is calling us, and God is who is calling me. I'm not really pretending to be in District G, really, but my duty is calling me, my country is calling me, the Constitution is calling me, so I'm here for that. But if you can vote for anyone, I'm going to be happy about that. Not the blue system right now running, and really, one point that I can say is I have three languages, and I see there another 50% of the voting registration in Nevada, Reno. Nobody's talking about them, and they don't know when it's primary. It is my Latino family, and I want to really go for them and talking with them, even if I'm coming or not in District G, the representation, I'm going to call them to save the future of this nation, our children. Thank you.
Can we get a round of applause for our incumbent and candidates running for WCSD School Board? That concludes the three questions that both Eddie and I had, and now we're going to do an open mic.
Before we do that, I wanted to mention a couple of things. Stephanie Flores is a nurse. She couldn't be here. She responded because she's on nurse duty. And Chris Tabalik also responded. I think it had, he's a teacher at Booster and a coach at Excel, and I don't think they would give him time off, apparently. That's a good excuse. Anyway, when you go to questions, you need to, either if you have a mic, ask the question or go out by Gary, there's a mic there, to ask who you're going to ask the question of. With that, take it away, Brooke. Start it.
Why, thank you, Ray. So yes, we're going to open it up for open mic. If it is directed towards a particular candidate or incumbent, please just make that aware. You have 30 seconds to ask your question. The candidates will, and the incumbent will have one minute for a response. And if you want to do a rebuttal after somebody speaks, please raise your hand, and we will then pass the baton back to you.
I just want to add a, a point. It's not a question of any of the candidates. Can you hear me? I'm having a discussion at 3:30 this afternoon. I was invited to a meeting that is informal, but is with a representative from Hillsdale College. They want to bring Hillsdale here.
That is amazing. If someone has a question, they can come up, there's some mics over next to Gary. And if you don't, I'll, I'll, I'll start.
Wait, before you do, I wanted to acknowledge Reno Gazette reporter is still here. I see her somewhere.
That's Ms. Siobhan McAndrews from RGJ is here, and we are really grateful that she came to join us today. So I'll start with a question if nobody has one. And, and this will just be for everybody, whoever wants to raise their hand and go first. How do you feel about parental rights being removed and transgenderism being enforced into WCSD?
I'll go first. Victoria Meyer. Now, this goes to Administrative Regulation 5161, which many people don't know about. I do have it posted on my website, voteforvictoria.com, and it lays out how teachers are not, first of all, it says right to privacy. Students have a right to privacy even from their parents. It states this in the document. It says teachers cannot talk to parents about pronoun use and shared bathrooms and this kind of thing. And look, we need to get back to teaching. This stuff, you know, I feel, I feel I have a heart for these kids, they're confused, and it's a parental issue. Parents need to be dealing with their children on all these issues, transgender and otherwise. The classroom needs to be orderly, and students need to be taught civics, government, our Constitution, going back to tried and true teaching methods. We need to get rid of all this identity politics and all this, all these issues around that. Let the parents do it. It's their job.
You know what I like to say is I don't identify as having a master's degree because I have one, so I agree with that. Thank you, Victoria. Does anybody else want to answer that question?
Yeah, the simplest way to get rid of the trans, transgender issue, it's required by any school that takes federal funds. Most people don't know, the federal government gives you a whopping maybe 5%, 6%. Tell them to keep their money. And then you don't have to do any of the ridiculous things that come with it. And in the meantime, any child that comes to school, you got to come, right to come to school, dress where you want, you're going to be called by the name on your birth certificate, you're going to use the bathroom in the locker room, that's your gender on your birth certificate. But we're not required to do anything because we're, you get rid of most of special ed, you get rid of free lunch, you get rid of the subsidized care, and you get rid of the transgender. Tell the federal government, keep their money.
No one knows a student, the child, better than their parent, and parents have rights, they have a right to know what's going on with their parents. And the audacity of schools to hide things from them is absolutely beyond me. The parents need to be involved in every single decision that is made with their kid, whether it's what classes their kids are taking, if they're going to be involved in sports. Parents should not have anything hidden from them.
Okay. Ditto.
Anybody else on that? Before we open it up for, anybody else want to ask some questions of the candidates and the incumbent?
Yeah, I have a question for all of you. How are you going to address absenteeism that's killing our local schools? The kids don't show up, how are they going to win?
I guess since I'm the incumbent, I'll start with that. We went from 24 to 31% chronic absenteeism. Some of the high schools are over 60% chronic absenteeism. When I do go to the high schools, when they let me in, I, you see the kids wandering the hallways, you see them playing football out in the parking lot, not attending class. You have to address it. The current basically motto for the kids is D is for diploma. Not under my watch. If I can get some backup, if you don't attend class, you don't graduate.
Well, the way you, the way you fix the attendance, Ray, the way you fix the attendance is that you simply, it's not like how I theorize about it. I fixed it at 12 schools. They come to school, or you enforce the law, and the parents and the kid have to go to court. Then, of course, you have to create a good enough school to where kids want to be there. And you don't have that until it's fully exposed. It's rotten. It's drug-filled, it's violent, it's disrespectful, and nobody on earth can teach in that situation. No reasonable child wants to be there in that situation. But it's effortless. I, I averaged well up in the 90s in 12 different schools.
Yeah, I was going to jump in and say, like many laws in America right now, we're just not enforcing them. So, you know, rather than hiring a new director of whatever, and, you know, whatever other administrative people that they seem to want to fill in the green house over there on Ninth Street, I'd be focusing on hiring some more truancy officers to enforce the laws and deal with the kids that are not going to classroom, and make it so that it's not as fun to miss class as it is to go to class.
So as a teacher, I did see a lot of kids who were truant, and I got lots of feedback as to why they would be truant. And there are a variety of reasons. Definitely enforcement is part of it. And then Paul also said, making it something that's meaningful for them. And that's something I heard often from students. Why am I learning this? What is the point? If they have buy-in, they can see a purpose, they want to be there. That is going to help. Now, that's not going to fix all of it, but that would fix part of it. Make the education relevant, and then enforce, and then identify what are all of the issues, and then address each of those issues.
Yes. Well, I have three different, three children, total different learning style, three professional, so I was dealing with this movement in my home and outside. Yes, everybody learned from different ways. So school choices, both share style, we have different system of school, we can implement inside the school, and the money that we don't see right now, we have at least 30% of the budget going to helping the children, professional, be with these children, one-to-one. Thank you.
Hi, Oscar Williams. I want to put control back in the hands of the students and the parents. That's where they've become disenfranchised in so many ways, and school sucks, and they don't want to go to school. I can relate. I hated school at certain points, and I acted out, I was truant at one point, and then I found a school that I really, really wanted to be at. It's all about the school, the teachers, the attitude, and empowering students to branch out and explore their interests, rather than force-feeding them in some kind of mold and then wondering why they don't want to fit in the mold, and then giving them drugs when they act out because of ADHD or whatever, mental illness they want to call it. Yeah, there's another way to do it, and, and I've been a part of that since I was a young man. I've been through many different schools and types of learning, different philosophies, and so I've seen it from the inside, and I'm the man today because of all that. I would like to create individualized programs and open up a city campus so that parents and students can create their own curriculum that'll engage them, that'll give them some reason to go to school. Thank you.
Go ahead, gentlemen. Ask your question.
I got a big mouth, so I think they can hear me. I have a mother who just texted me. Her comment was, his teacher at Jesse Beck told my son and another kid that they were poor and low income. What can I do about that? I tried to contact the principal, and the principal told me that both my son and the other guy were drug dealers or drug addicts, and there's nothing they can do, but she will call them back.
I'm going to go ahead and jump in on that one because my son went to Jesse Beck, so trust me, I know how it goes. So Principal Lane does not care about the children. When I was dealing with my situation, we asked her for a meeting, and she told us that she was unavailable for the next five weeks.
Yeah, that's what she's dealing with right now.
So, so you will not get anywhere there. Quite frankly, the entire system is against the children at Jesse Beck.
Would you believe her son is only nine years old? Well, not nine, he's 12 or 13. He's got on drugs.
Yeah, my, when, yeah, my son was six when he was going there, and trust me, we saw violence, we saw the teacher get hit in the face with a chair and be sent to the hospital. So there's a lot going on at Jesse Beck, and people sweep it under the rug because it's a quote, "good" school. So there's a lot that's being hidden from parents, and I sympathize greatly with this mother, and trust me, I would be all over it if I was on the board.
And if I could toss one out, I was at Rooster when the shooting went off. I had just left. I seen all the kids run across the street, and I seen some teachers in the background. Wow, the kids, when the one boy who did the shooting ran to Denny's, and the teacher was in the background when he ran across the street, and next thing I know, it was a shooting. So I just thought I'd bring that out since I was around at the time when this happened, and present it to the board that this is what's really going on at your schools.
Oscar, did you want to respond to that? Did you raise your?
I agree, Monica. I'm not sure I have a proper response to that. But I haven't...
But Josh really did a good job of answering it. Jesse Black in particular, yeah, there's a problem, and there's a security problem open down. It's not just Jesse Black, it's a lot of schools. Somebody has not paid attention to security, a teacher or those students. And I have to say, I want to say a little deeper, because the district E, they're building the new Debbie Smith, J J campus, and for one little I've been able to deal with development, there's some real lack of attention to security. But there's a fight a week now. Where is the security office? Where are those security officers? How quickly can they get on that? If there's threats against a teacher, if there's an active shooter that comes into campus? I think that this nice of candidates, all this great stuff that's shown here about the security protection of the students, I don't know where that went, but I would definitely...
They're answering your question now.
Any other candidates want to respond? Oh, yep, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Teddy, tell her, tell her the easiest way. Okay, good. Tell her, tell her, call the principal and tell her she wants to meet with him and hear about everything. When the principal turns it down, tell her to contact the superintendent, ask for the same thing. When the superintendent turns her down, and ever call me with Education Crusade. We'll set up a press conference, we'll do a little press release, we'll send enough in it, so Siobhan will show up and cover it for the RGJ, and we'll get a few other places. Things change, that's how you do it.
Amen, Paul. You know, I just wanted to say, Paul, well said, and I'm sitting here listening to you and looking at everybody here, families, teachers, people involved with the school board and everything, and I'm scratching my head. I know I'm older than all of you put together, but here's one thing that I don't understand. There were two people when I grew up that I was deathly afraid of. My grandmother who raised me, and the dean of men who spanked my butt if I did something wrong, okay? And believe me, there was nothing but pickup trucks in our parking lot in Jacksonville Beach, Florida, okay? And every pickup truck had a gun in the back window, and there was never a school shooting ever because people were afraid.
Do we have another question from the audience? You have a question, Oscar? Okay.
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Right now, they're considering a new, what number is it, Paul? Superintendent? There's, there are five candidates. How long will this one last, and how are they evaluated?
Yeah, what we've got, we've got five finalists, but you've only really got three. Two were brought in from out of state just as winter dressing to make it look like the fix wasn't already in. So here's what, here's what the three gentlemen who are finalists have been doing. They've been in the district for about 20 years each. One in charge of continuous improvement. Continuous improvement, there hadn't been any. It's gone down, every last metric has gone downhill. Second one's in charge of academics, improving academics. Academics? 90% of our kids who get a diploma can't qualify for college. Then the third one, it's kind of esoteric, he had a real focused degree in philosophy. So I imagine if a kid punched him in the face at North Valley High School, he'd say, well, what would Aristotle think? And so what we've got here is, and this guy said, they want to hire him, remember, a package worth 300, 400,000 a year. He says it would take five or 10 years if I were soup to turn the schools around, but I'd be willing to do it. Bless your heart. You would be willing to work for 400,000 a year for 10 years and accomplish nothing again? So we've got three absolute village idiots in the finals running for this thing, Ray.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
I have a question, and it refers to, I believe, what Stephanie Phillips, who was our guest speaker from Running for Senate, spoke about earlier. She talked about vocational trade accreditation. So kids that are in a trade school can achieve a certain level of accreditation and commensurate with their baccalaureate peers and get something out of the program. Of course, here in Northern Nevada, we have a couple of new trade academies. There's the Galena Outdoor Academy and the Debbie Smith one I mentioned a little while ago. And so my question is, understanding that, and I wish Matt Buehler was here for this, but the state requires the ACT, it's the standardized test. The ACT is good and bad. I see a lot of problems with it, particularly with, with the way our current situation. Our kids are pigeonholed to achieve, to score well on that thing. But there's really, how do you, how do you provide a balance between the ACT and a trade school education, all right? So this is the thing that we need to tackle in our board and give guidance to the state, not the state tell us what to do. We need to come up with our platform and tell them what we think is best and what our parents want out of this curriculum, out of the school district. Thank you.
We don't, we don't really need to change anything with the district. You hear people talking about building more trade schools. Because it's something you can buy, we've got outstanding trade programs. The unions have outstanding ones. What are we missing? We have the instructors, we have the programs. What don't we have? We don't have enough clean, sober kids that know basic skills and can work enough and will show up enough to do it, because they won't make them do it. Now, when it gets around to the ACT, every school district I was in, we had record-high academic achievement. You don't do it by targeting that. Good scores on test scores is the side effect of having kids show up clean and sober, shut up, sit down, listen to the teacher, and come every day. The test scores, two ways to make a dog's tail wag, Oscar. One, grab the tail. The other one, love that dog, and you couldn't stop the tail if you wanted to.
Oh, but that's not equitable.
Well, and so, well, like I said, you got to be willing to fight them. And so if you do this, if you have a school where they want to be there, where you're giving the teachers a learning environment, you couldn't keep test scores down if you wanted to.
I want to add that I recently heard our board president, Beth Smith, in an interview on, with Jill Tolles, can't think of the show now, but about a month ago, and she said that the, that the reason our ACT test scores are low in Washoe County schools is because we only offer them at the beginning of the year. This, in fact, isn't true. I looked it up. ACT tests are offered throughout the sophomore years, spring, summer, fall, spring, fall, winter. There's about five or six different tests. It's just an example of the way that, that the message is shaped by this, by this board president, and, yeah, we have failing ACT tests.
Quick comment, if I might. This is the mythical creature called the earbud. The earbud is this mythical creature that every time you show them a stat, they say, "Yeah, but..." "Well, yeah, but we don't test," right, you know? "Yeah, but we are last or near last in every study, every category, ACT, S-Bac, absenteeism, you name it." So the earbud is dead.
So, I moved to Reno in 1996. The Reno Gazette Journal had its last in public education, K through 12 then, right? How many years is it? 28? It's personal. I am a Nevadan. I want our schools to do good. I do not want to be associated with ruining kids' lives. That message, I don't know how people could look at 30 years and say it doesn't matter. 30 years. Let's win, folks.
Is there any more questions? Because we're about to wrap it up, but I had a few comments.
Just responding to Ed's comment. Best thing, Ed, would be the RGJ right now is offering op-eds to anybody. Put what you just said in an op-ed and send it in there. Nevada Globe will do the same thing. Get your thought out there.
And Ray, I have one quick comment, if I can, maybe 30 seconds.
Go ahead.
Mr. Carlo brought up a great point. So I just want to clarify this for anybody that's watching. The BS sexual harassment complaint that was made against me, I wish I'd brought the picture. It shows me alone in a room when that happened, and it shows the two liars in the parking lot alone. So when that came out, instead of apologizing, the school district circled the wagons and refuses to investigate. So we've taken them to court for that investigation. I want an investigation. We have a whistleblower, not anonymous, a real whistleblower that came forward and said, "I heard with my own ears, Beth Smith, the board president, conspired with another individual to falsely fabricate the story." Anybody listening to this? The witness said they have personal knowledge that Beth Smith, the board president who's running for District E or District D, conspired to fabricate a story against me. It's bad enough I have to be careful what I say and what I do, and I need like a body camera in the hallway. But how do you protect yourself against fabrication of false stories? So I call for the Gazette, I call for any of the media, I call for any of you to reach out to Beth Smith and say, "True or false? Did Jeff do it, or did Jeff not do it? What's your evidence?" And stand up, "Did you conspire? Where is she today to do that?" I call on her to answer that.
Can I, I want to make a comment to that, too. And some of you guys do know my story, but I was married to Mr. Scott Kelly, and by his own admission, he was guilty of doing numerous horrific things to me and my kids and in the community. And they ousted him, rightfully so. And here we have a complete opposite situation of a man who's in office, who has a false accusation, who has actual proof that he was never in a room where these two people were, and they won't investigate it. So I think that speaks volumes. I have my own personal experience of watching my ex-husband get booted out for actual admitting to doing wrong, and we have someone who hasn't done any wrong, and they won't do a thing about it. Thank you, Jeff.
Before we wrap it up, I'm going to let...
Yeah, we don't want to let Jeff's question get away. We've got in the room here, Siobhan McAndrews, longtime education reporter for the RGJ. Siobhan, we've read stories over many years going after many people. Why? Can you tell us? Why with a video that shows what Jeff just said? Why with a come-out witness who was in the meeting? Can you tell us why the RGJ, you particularly, have not written this article or mark? And what plans do you have for doing it in the future? Mic's all yours.
And if he wants to respond.
She said she's working on a story.
And by the way, by the way, everything we're doing, Bill is doing on video, and it'll be out within a week.
I also call on the RGJ to fully investigate this story and report it as it is, the truth of the story. And I just want to encourage everyone, we cannot win, we cannot turn over the school board, we cannot change the course of Washoe County. If you don't get out and vote and get people to vote in the primaries, May 25th to June 11th, please get people to vote for it. There's a lot of fine candidates running here on this side of the table.
Thank you very much.
Before we wrap it up, oh, oh, a couple more. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, many people here, I totally agree with you, Victoria, they don't know when it's going to be the primary, they don't know why, for the community, for our children, for our future, for our country. This is the last, last one, voting real one. After this year, if we are not calling right now, we're not going to have a country. Please, go and try to call all our families, Latinos. And right now, we have almost 50% of the vote. I'm here, if you need a videos, I speak in Spanish, I can pass to you guys, so you can know, I'm not just run, just running for me, but running for our constitution, our country, for you, for this country, for the future of Nevada. Please, go ahead there, I can be in contact with everybody and help in some way in this second language that I have, and help everybody. We have to be, we are a family, we have to be working together. Right now is the last time. Thank you, bye.
And reminder about the primary. The primary and voting is starting, like Victoria mentioned, May 25th to June 11th. The most critical component of this is if any person in the school district race gets 50% plus one, they're in. If we can get Jeff and retain him, it's in. He doesn't have to go to the primary. So if we can flip these boards in June, that's, this is our opportunity. If we don't flip the boards after June, it'll come down to the top two individuals, candidates, incumbents in that seat. So 50% plus one, June. Ray, go ahead.
No, we have, Ron wants to ask a question.
Just one question, and this is for anybody. I'd like to know if they're teaching the U.S. Constitution, and what's your perspective and your position on that?
I think, Victoria Meyer, some teachers are teaching some of the Constitution, but the state guidelines have minimal, minimal requirements regarding that. And I think it's incredibly important, we are the shining light on the hill. When this country, if, if we don't make it, that's, the light goes out, is extinguished in the world. And the Constitution was, we, well, we all know. It's the most important document with our Bill of Rights that we have, and it needs to be protected, and it can't be protected if children don't understand. We don't need the 1619 project. We need to teach the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and what makes it unique in the history of humankind.
Okay, we're going to wrap it up now, real quickly.
Quickly, quickly. Yes. Did you know that the United States, the federal, federal government are supposed to be at least one day a year, all the public school in the United States, they're supposed to be teaching the Constitution? Right now, 95% they are not teaching the one day. So come back with the Constitution complete, so everybody going to know their own personal right, their own right, defend yourself. Right now, teachers, they don't know how to defend themselves, so they need to training this teacher, this, to teach our future generation. Constitution 100% in the United States again. Thank you.
All right. No, use the mic. There you go.
I'm, I was a single mom, I was a single mom, raised two kids in the Washoe County district, and they're, they're all on their own, thank God, you know? The kids, when parents go to work, single mom, even now, the lives of these kids are under the teacher's supervision. Now, who supervises the teachers from the kindergarten, first grade, middle school, high school, and college? I am out of the system, because they're gone for a while, they're out of state, one doesn't, they both don't want to come back here. Now, but I care about Washoe County children. What? You don't have to answer now, it's just, I'm giving you some, a mother's point of view, When you are elected, and I'm sure some of you are elected, and I know who to vote now for, and I'm glad I came here, how, what would it take for you, and how much of your lives, if you are elected as a politician, would you give to the Washoe County school children?
All right, this is the last question. Answer very briefly, because I'm going to let Tom Tabor mention some.
I don't have, excuse me, I don't have a question, I have just a clarification on what Brooke said. The NVES.gov system is currently open for military, overseas voters, disabled voters, and those claiming to be of American Indian status. There's no proof of a disability required, there's no proof of your Native Indian heritage required. You can go on and get a ballot online on the NVES.gov right now. Thank you.
I'll be brief. The ballots come out next week, so the early voting ballots are coming out next week. I probably give 40, 80 hours a week to this thing, and that's what I'll continue to do.
Just one last thing. I want to answer this mother, because I am a mother, and, and we have the life of our children in this public school, and the one responsible for these teachers there with our children 24% of the time is Nevada Association of School Association, Nevada School of School Administration, NESA, and it's in Las Vegas right now. So they're, they have 100% of the curriculum, wonderful, they're not using, but they're using the new training and teaching, grooming teachers in the way to teaching our children. So if they're not going and following this information, this teaching and training according to the NESA, this teacher, they cannot teach in the school right now. So that's why I'm advocating also for these teachers to be in training in the Constitution and training our children, future children in Nevada. Right now, yeah, that's, they're the responsible, NESA. Thank you.
I'd like to address the mother also. Uh, just, uh, what are the teachers teaching and how do we know what they're teaching? This should not be divisive or controversial, but I'm sure some will make it so. Uh, I, I believe in, potentially in putting cameras in the classroom and any parent can check in with their child and their teacher at any time to see what they are teaching. There's nothing that a teacher should be teaching that a parent should not be able to see.
I hate to cut, I hate to cut all of you off, but I want to give Tom Tabor a chance with, to explain Conversations from the Capitol on Eddie's program, or America Matters station. Tom?
Thank you, Ray. Conversations from the Capitol has been around for a long time. I'm a host and I stopped for a few years while I went back to college because I didn't have bachelor's degree, managed to get two of them. Now we're back on the air.
Come here.
Conversations from the Capitol talks basically politics. We have been working since, uh, November on bringing candidates in from this, excuse me, the U.S. Senate, all the way down into the school board and the, uh, city councils and so forth. Why? Because very few people know who the heck is running for what. And we allow these people for a 15-minute session to be able to explain why they're running, what they want to do. We try not to interrupt them until they're finished with what they want to say and then the panel itself will ask some questions. My good lady here is one of our co-hosts. Randy Lloyd is another co-host and Elizabeth Purty is a fourth person in our panel. People talk about the primary election. In most cases, someone mentioned 25% of the people voted in the primary a couple of years ago. That's an outlier. Usually 18 to 22% show up in the primary. So I use a simple arithmetic of 20%. So if you vote in the primary, you vote for yourself and you vote for four other people. So why don't we get that up to 50% that show up in the primary? Now we have a lot more people deciding who the candidate should be for the general election. What I despise is when people talk to me and say, "Where the hell did we find these candidates for the general election?" And I ask them, "Did you vote in the primary?" And they said, "No." I said, "That's why you got who you got." Okay? Long time ago, because, uh, when I was in high school back in 1950s, we had occupational classes. As we have progressed in Nevada, we have removed the occupational classes from the high school. By the time you finish the various types of occupational classes that were available, including how to run a business and run machines and so forth, you were capable of going into the employment wor, employment world and get a basic job. Those have been removed from the high schools. Now you have to go to a college, a community college usually, in order to pick up the information you could have had while you were in high school. Now I know we have a couple of very good occupational classes going on. In fact, three of the houses on our block were built by Washoe County School District in their occupational classes. Why do we have only schools, special schools for special things? If a student lives in the district that is not within that area for that school, they can't get a bus ride to school. Mom and dad, or mom or dad, or somebody else has to drive them. If you are down in the southern part of Reno and you want to have a particular course that happens to be up in Spanish Springs High School, how do you get there? You can't take the course. We should be starting to put back classes in the high school that actually prepare people. I wrote a paper maybe 25 years ago that said 80% of the, of the, of the jobs available do not require a college education. Okay? If you go to college and you want to end up being a mason, that's fine. If you don't go to college and you want to be a mason, that's fine. But occupational people, particularly good welders and people like that are making six figures. We got people that graduate from college with useless degrees that are down making $35,000, $40,000 a year. Now, this coming Friday, because Conversations from the Capitol comes between 11:00 and noon on Fridays. Paul White will be with us to discuss his running for CG and Alisa Wu also. Alisa will be on at 11:15, 11:30, Paul will be with us. Last week at 11:45, Victoria joined us. We are trying to bring all of the people who are running for office before you. If you want to know who has been there before and you want to see what they have to say, go to americamatters.us, Conversations from the Capitol.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much for a chance to chat with you.
I want to turn it over to Brooke to wrap the final comment.
I just want to say, uh, can we get a round of applause for our incumbent and our candidates today? I think they did an exceptional job at our town hall. And thank you to Red Move for hosting the town hall debate. Thank you to Eddie Floyd for being my co-moderator and thank you for everybody who joined us today. Um, our children matter, their future matters. Being a boy mom, having come from the district, it is so disappointing. Um, having my oldest in the district, it's just gut-wrenching. But we have to do better as parents, we have to continue to speak up. I'm, I'm proud to be the first parent that has spoken up in this community and I'll continue to do so. And I ask all these people that are here, please go out and vote for your primary candidates. We can take back our schools. It just takes everybody putting forth the effort, door knocking, getting your voice heard and I appreciate everybody and their efforts today. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ray and Bill.
Very last comment, last comment. Our next meeting will be up here, June 21st, and it's going to be after the primary and it'll be who won and what happened and a discussion of who won and hopefully we'll have a lot of happy candidates speaking. That's June 21st, it's on a, huh?